The first item is for the YCUA bond discussion. Luke Blackburn is here, Director of YCUA, and he may have to leave and go to the next meeting, as well as Tom Colas, our bond counselor for YCUA.
Are we okay to go? Would you like me to come down closer, or?
Sure.
Sure. So. Okay, thank you. So, good afternoon, Supervisor Trumpo, and members of the Board. We're here before you tonight to...
I gotta talk into the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I think it'll pick it up. There you go.
We're here tonight to talk about the bond sale for improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. This is for two capital improvement projects at the wastewater treatment plant, which include improvement to three of the original ultraviolet disinfection channels at the wastewater treatment plant, along with significant improvements to the Headworks odor control facility. That project is more encompassing of replacing some ductwork within the facility, some electrical improvements, along with new chemical tanks. But a larger portion of that project is really focused on what we call the Influent Wet Well at the project, which sees significant corrosion due to the gases that come into the treatment plant. So, it is an area of concern for the staff. So, the plan is to bypass that well for probably about six weeks and do a rehabilitation of that well, which was last done in the early 2000s. The CDM Smith out of Detroit is the engineering consultant on the improvements to the Headworks odor control facility. The opinion of probable cost for that project is just north of $8 million. That number, we do believe, may move a little bit, just to the amount of variability with the bypass and so many things that are still somewhat uncertain. We're very concerned about that number. The UV project, because we just added equipment to the fourth channel, I think maybe Jeff came before you, probably two years ago, for that bond sale. The variability in that project is much less. We're just replacing the original equipment in the three channels, which we just replaced equipment in, replaced new equipment, excuse me, in Channel 4. So, the cost there, we're much more confident on, and believe that project cost is just north of $2 million. So, those two projects are being packaged together and are available for just under $800,000 in loan forgiveness. It's an ARP grant, and these projects are eligible for funding through the SRF program. And Mr. Colas is here to talk about any further details regarding the bond process.
I just have a couple of questions on the, I'm glad we're doing the Headworks, because that's where a lot of odor is from, right? And if we bypass it for six weeks, is the odor going to be worse, or how are we going to handle that bypass? Because it's pretty...
Absolutely. Great question. We intend to do the bypass during colder months, so hopefully the impact to the neighborhood is minimized. There will be some impact. There's no real great way around that. As we take out equipment and fans, that system was never built with redundancy that we have in the treatment plant. So, either the system, when there's significant repairs, we do a lot of public notices regarding it being offline. We hope if we do it during very cold weather, that the impact is minimized as much as possible.
Will that help with the odor that we're still experiencing?
We took, I'll say, a very conservative approach to the odor control project. There was an original plant, which we went away from, to adopt a new technology for odor control at the plant, but there was very little performance information that was available to us indicating that it would outperform the existing system. The existing system is a chemical scrubbing system. It's very robust. It is very diverse in the amount of pollutants, hydrogen sulfide, mercaptans, amines, different things that you smell at the treatment plant. It's very robust at doing that. So, we're trying to make, I'll say, incremental or marginal improvements by drawing more air off the, probably the largest source of odors for the community. So, trying to make marginal improvements instead of throwing everything out, so to speak, if that helps.
So, you think it will help with...
I think it could be, it's absolutely going to be the same or better. And of course, we hope it's going to be much better.
Over the years, we've put so much money into odor control, and have been told so many times that it was going to get better. It can be, depending on if something's down, or...
This is one of the major sources of odors at the wastewater treatment plant. Of course, it's not the only source of odors at the treatment plant. So, I think we have a lot of different sources that we're, we have different strategies that we're trying to work through. This is just one of them that I think will, again, provide some marginal improvements, but it's going to provide reliability, so that the building is down less.
Okay.
And hopefully prevent any catastrophic issues. The electrical gear inside that building is in extremely bad shape. It was located inside the facility, which is exposed to what we call hydrogen sulfide. So, the electrical components are in extremely bad shape, and they need to be replaced. So, I think just from numerous different perspectives, it's going to be an improvement, but I don't want to come and tell you that the neighbors are going to see a substantial improvement. I hope they do, but we're only making marginal improvements to that system and from that perspective.
But if it's down less, that will help.
That's a benefit, when it's...
Yeah, that will be a huge benefit. Because then, okay.
I can talk about the financing. So, as Luke had indicated, this project qualifies from the, through the state's clean water, state revolving fund. Think about that. If the authority was, one option is for them to finance this and go out to the open market, where you find a bondholder and you, you know, take bids in a competitive market. Alternatively, if you qualify through the state program, the state actually buys the bonds, and it's at a fixed rate, depending upon which term you choose, 20 years or 30 years. The current rates are 1 and 7/8ths for a 20-year financing, and 2 and 1/8th for a 30-year financing. So, the expectation is to do a 20-year financing and lock in the 1 and 7/8th percent. The state puts together a schedule as to timing, as to when bonds are issued, and they basically break it up in various quarters. The milestone schedule, which actually sets out the calendar, has this as a fourth quarter. That's the state's fourth quarter financing. So, if everything continues forward, we would actually be part of the fourth quarter, which would have a closing proceeds available in August of, August 28th of this year. To do that, the structure under the statute in which the authority is created has a contract that's put together with the benefiting units. So, it would be both the township and the city, since this is part of the plant, and actually even some of the contracting municipalities would pay a proportionate share of the debt service on this issue. So, but from an issuance perspective, there's a contract that's put together amongst the township, city, and the authority, basically indicating that the authority would issue bonds for this project. We set a maximum dollar amount. You set a maximum duration of years in which the bonds could be issued. The expectation is bids would be taken out to bid in May, received in June, so we'd know the actual project size that's going to be financed. And then ultimately, Eagle provides their order saying, "This is what we're going to finance," the actual project cost, once bids are in. And as Luke had indicated, the state has indicated this project would qualify for a grant from, basically from ARP funds of just shy of $800,000. So, you know, that's about a 10%, maybe short, maybe slightly less than 10% of the total project cost is a grant. So, we wouldn't bond finance that portion. We'd get those funds directly from the state and use that to construct a portion of the project. So, the resolution that is before you approves entering into the contract with YCUA. The city's going to consider the same resolution, the same contract, at their meeting tonight. And what it authorizes is entering into the contract and then publishing a notice in the paper. As part of the statute, the contract is ineffective until a notice is published with a right of referendum. So, to the extent the residents want to file a petition, they can do so within 45 days of the publication of that notice. That needs to be signed by not less than 10% of the registered electors. If that petition's filed by either, so the township will publish its own notice, the city will publish its own notice. If there is a petition, that would certainly delay the project. You couldn't actually issue the bonds without putting it to a full vote. But to the extent that that 45-day period expires, the next, the contract then becomes effective. YCUA would then consider a bond resolution after the bids are open that would establish the final terms of the bonds, the maximum dollar amount, which would be refined to what we have now in the, in the contract, which is currently 11 and 1/2 million. The current project cost expectation is about 10 and 1/2. But just in case, if, you know, costs come in slightly higher than expected, we build a little bit of a cushion into the resolution and into the contract. Again, those are all as not to exceed, and they automatically reduce based upon what the state's willing to finance, as long as it's within those parameters. So, the expectation, again, is to do the 20-year financing at the 1 and 7/8th percent. And then, again, those costs would be shared between the city, the township, and then the contracting municipalities. Happy to answer any questions?
Questions? I have a couple. So, the $800,000 grant, I thought I heard you say it would go towards part of the project. So, then why would we bond the entire 11 million?
We wouldn't. So, what we would do is, once the project costs come in, we would look at, what's the total project cost, take out, you know, reduce the amount by how much grant funding we're going to get, and then bond the difference.
I just wanted, okay, that wasn't clear to me.
Yep.
And...
Yeah, so, Brendan, you might think, so unlike in years past, the state has provided for principal forgiveness, which is different than actually giving us a grant. So, what they would require us to do was actually issue the full project size, but then they would, they would forgive some of the principal. But you actually had to issue the full dollar amount. This is actually a full-out grant, so we don't bond for that grant cost. They're going to give us those funds, and we reduce the bond size accordingly, so we're not even issuing bonds for that part of the project.
Okay. And the 20 years versus the 30 years, we talked about then a little bit here, because the resolution says 30 years, but everything we talk about is 20 years.
Yes.
So, can you elaborate on that?
So, what we're just trying to do is to provide some flexibility, that if some unforeseen circumstance arises where it's determined that the 30-year makes more sense, either based on what the state's providing as an interest rate, or a determination's made that from an annual debt service, we want to reduce the debt service requirements, the 30-year will provide a lower annual payment, but you'd have an overall higher interest cost because your debt's outstanding longer. So, all we're really trying to do is just prevent a situation where, at some point, the 30-year becomes a better option, but we're limited under our contract in being able to do that, and we'd have to go back and redo all the proceedings again, and maybe miss a funding opportunity from the state.
I have a question.
Yes, Josh.
So, during the period of payment, would the bonds be able to be refinanced?
They would. So, since the state is the party that's holding the bonds, they would have to consent to that.
Okay.
But when you say refinance, when we typically look at refinancing debt, we're looking to take out higher interest rate debt and put in lower interest rate debt. At 1 and 7/8ths, there very likely will not be the opportunity to find better rates at any time, especially out in the market. So, the opportunity may be prepay, if there are funds available, would be there if the state consents to that, but actually replacing it with lower interest rate bonds is highly unlikely, considering we're starting at under 2% interest rates.
And you, we don't know the exact amount of what the bonds will be.
We won't know that until we actually bid the project, know exactly what those costs are going to be, and then we'll have a more refined number. Again, that should be, I want to say the bids come in in June.
June 14.
Yeah.
And then it'll come back here?
It'll go back to YCUA. So, the contract, everything will reduce based upon what Eagle will approve based on those, it won't exceed, of course, the 11 and 1/2, but the, it won't come back to either the city or the township board. So, your representation through YCUA would be really where the, they'll determine the final dollar amount, as long as it's within the parameters in the contract. But Eagle's only going to let you finance your project cost plus issuance cost. That's it.
So, the total cost will not exceed 11 and 1/2 million?
Correct.
So, if we wanted to estimate, we could always estimate the 11 and 1/2 million, just as a, what I want to say, rough estimate. Yeah. And of course, it could always get better from there.
So, the expectation, the current, you know, based on current thought processes, that it's going to be less than that.
Okay.
Hopefully, it's significantly less than that, but, and I think some numbers have been run based on the 10 and 1/2, and I don't know if there was an 11 and 1/2 that was also run too, but, and factoring in the ARP grant too, right? So, you reduce that 10 and 1/2 cost by the, by the dollars that the state's or the federal government's going to provide for that, for that project. So, the goal, the expectation is it's going to be, hopefully, 10 and 1/2 or less.
Yeah, closer, yeah, closer to 10 and 1/2, yeah.
Right. And because, again, we did build in a cushion to the notice based upon just if we think the current estimate is 10 and 1/2, bids have been coming in high and over the last year or more. So, even though we think we have a good estimate, you just, if it comes in at 10.6, you don't want it to be prohibitive, and you can't do it. You'd be, you know, you'd have to, you're limited to the 10 and 1/2, so.
And the document for SRF contract, it has 30 years in there.
Not to exceed 30 years.
No, I mean, it actually has a payment scheduled, 30 years.
Which would be automatically reduced based upon whatever, if the 20 years chosen, the contract reduces automatically based on the Eagle order of approval and the term that's selected by YCUA. So, it's not actually, you're not locking in a 30-year at all. It's just setting the maximum duration and potential amortization schedule. But there's language in here that it reduces automatically based upon what's actually issued, and the expectation is the 20-year issue.
So, then it would be up to us to make sure that our board members, Anya, K...
Yeah, so they'd actually see, right.
I would prefer 20, because I thought that's what we were doing, that's what the resolution says, but when you dig into the documentation, it could go to 30.
So, if I could, I think that came about as Eagle now offers the 30-year option. It was never considered by YCUA staff. In this specific instance, the assets that we're actually installing, you wouldn't really want to exceed that 20-year lifespan. So, there's no intent on YCUA staff whatsoever. It's a consensus across the group. It would be a 20-year financing, or it would be, we would revisit the project. We would have to, you know, come at a different time for next year's funding to see what it looks like. We wouldn't go forward with the project.
So, you would be okay if we said 20 years?
We'd have to rewrite the documents and come back at a different meeting, but, yeah.
Yeah, it just, it's not clear, that's all I'm, I think clarity is important, and it's not clear with all the information that was provided. One says 20-year, every, the documents say 30. And is it new to say that Yucka can invest the money? Is that new language? It's always been that way?
Yeah. So, what happens, again, it's, in this situation, it's, there's really not going to be a lot of funds that are going to be held for a period of time. Unlike, say, if the township or Yucka was issuing bonds out to the market, they would get all the proceeds at closing. Here, with the state, you draw it down based upon, you have invoices, you submit them for reimbursement, and you get funds, and then they pay the vendors, and then YCUA pays the vendors. So, I mean, that fund, those funds might be sitting there for a couple of days, but even while they're for a couple of days, if you can earn a nominal interest rate on them, why not? Federal tax law allows you to do so, so you could invest those proceeds for the short period of time and use them as part of the project, you know, to fund part of the project, because they're still considered proceeds for bond purposes.
And on page 7, it says 35 years. So, it's just really confusing as one is... Another question I have is, and I think I know the answer, but I'm not exactly sure, so I'd rather hear it from you guys. Will the rate, YCUA water or sewer rates have to be increased to pay for this? If so, how much?
So, I think it would be premature to answer that question, just because we haven't got the bids back. In looking at the bond payments, it's fairly neutral in regards to, we provided at another document, and there's multiple bonds. The first payment under this bond would come in in 2025, and there's a dwarf 2003 fund that would come off the books, which is about a $200,000 payment. So, it's fairly neutral in regards to what it does to our debt service.
So, what would change that? How would that, is it safe to say there's not going to be an increase because we currently, no? For debt, for debt, for this debt?
For debt, that would be issued under this project, it would not directly result in a rate increase.
Okay.
But I do think we have many other projects and costs and things, so it's slightly separate.
But I just want to, if I read this correctly, it looks as if you're paying off one bond, and by doing this bond, there will be no increase for payment of the bond with a sewer rate.
Correct. Our debt, our sewer debt service payments fall down substantially over the next five years.
I think that's important. That's a good point, actually. And then the 75, 25%, the city and the township, because we're larger, and you review that every year.
Annually, yep.
And then the payments are based on that? If ours goes down, or ours goes up, then we'll have to pay more from the township division of YCUA.
Correct. So, the contract communities have language in their disposal agreements that dictate what portion of those payments they pay. And most of those are based upon their design capacity, or their capacity in the treatment plant.
That answers a lot of my questions. Anyone else have any other comments or questions?
I just wondered, I just wondered what Attorney Winters is thinking, because it says in there that we've carefully reviewed the contract, and usually when we're looking at contracts, we get a word from our attorney.
Well, I think these are the, over the years, Tom from Miller Canfield has been the bond counsel for township, even for YCUA, and they prepare these contracts, which are pretty much in keeping with what I've seen over the years. So, obviously, they are the, so they are the expert experts in this arena. I've read these over, and I'm not really sure exactly, I'm going from memory, on the other municipal contracts that Luke made reference to. Their portion is, with their portion of contribution, how does it affect the township versus the city division in terms of the 75, 25 split?
So, currently, right now, with WTUA, Pittsfield Township, Sumter, and Augusta, and a handful of other contract communities, they pay about 73% of debt service payments. WTUA's amount floats a little more each year. It's calculated slightly different. So, the remaining portion is then divided proportionally between the city and township. So, it's approximately 25, 30%. But it does, WTUA is such a major component of that calculation that when they move a few percent, it shifts everything quite a bit.
So, maybe I'm not asking this very artfully, but those payments received from those municipalities, are they credited to the township and the city division in the same proportion as a 75, 25% payment schedule that's in this, that's in every contract based upon, I think, usage, you know?
Correct. That's my understanding.
I'm not saying it very well, but...
But you're saying of what's left, of the 30% that would be left of payment, then proportionally, it's 75, whatever's in the contract. Correct.
Because I didn't really quite, and this may not be the right way of maybe asking this question, but on that $800,000 grant, is that considered to be a YCUA grant as opposed to it being one that would be divided 75, 25 on the debt service, or is that considered to be off the top and...
It's off the top. So, it reduces the total borrowing.
Yep.
To answer Trustee Swanson's question, I've reviewed this, and I can tell you that I'm not the bond attorney, but I have reviewed it, and I know it's in keeping with what we've approved in the past. I will say that I think the supervisor makes a valid point, though, in regards to the issue of the 35 years versus the, I think it was a 20, 20-year...
20 to 35.
So, I don't really know. I do know that what Tom was saying was that they automatically gets reset depending upon what the actual final loan amount...
The dollar amount is correct, yes.
...determined to be.
Yep. The total, the total principal amount does. The contract has not, from a fundamental standpoint, changed substantially at all over the years. So, there's no new provisions this year, in this year's contract, that weren't in last year's or the previous three or four years' contracts. So, they have been substantially the same structure for a contract from a financing perspective for probably a decade now. What comes into play, then, is the determination of, you know, how much flexibility do you want in that notice and in that contract to provide for various circumstances? And the 35-year, what's different than the 30-year, which might be confusing, is that we're actually paying 30 installments, and the first payment doesn't take place until after a year when the project's actually placed in service. So, if you actually look at from when the bonds are issued to when they finally mature, that can be longer than 30 years, because there's 30 principal installments. Now, here, it's going to be 20 principal installments, so we're well within the 35 year. But if they decide, you decided to do a 30-year financing, the reason the contract shows 35 years is some of that principal may not first be payable until three years out. So, you have a contract that covers the full term of the bonds, potentially, as opposed to, if it's just 30 years, our bond issue might be outstanding for 32 and 1/2 years, depending upon when that first installment's made, because the state has, you either pay 20 installments or 30 annual installments, and the first principal isn't until the project's actually placed in service. So, a lot of times, it's actually 30-plus or 20-plus years.
Have they had 30-year bonds before, or only 20 in the past?
A couple of years ago, they put in the 30-year rates. So, they started offering 30 years, and for some communities, if you are, if you are determined to be a disadvantaged community, the rate, the same rate applies for the 20 year and the 30 year.
Well, do we qualify for that?
No.
Based on the utility authority for that?
Based on, yeah. So, the way that Eagle has their spreadsheet laid out, unfortunately, we do not. Well, fortunately or unfortunately, we do not.
Well, that's fortunate.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I'm comfortable because the Yucka Board will say 20-year...
Correct.
Right.
Absolutely right.
That's a safety net for that.
Yep.
Madam Chair, will the, so if I understand it correctly, the 20 years will begin a year after it's placed in service, or...
Yep. Within a year. So, the state requirement is, and actually, we have a call with Eagle and the Finance Authority after the bids come in, and the question is, what's the date of initial operation, initiation of operation? And then you have to have a principal payment within a year of that date. And you, the payments are either April 1 or October 1 of a year. So, let's just say it's, you know, September 30 of 2024, we have to have a payment by, let's use October 2 of 2024. We could go out to October 1 of 2025 for our first principal payment, because it has to be within one year of the date of initial operation.
Oh, because I was wondering, how, how long typically do the projects take to get started?
It really depends. I mean, depend, you know, do you have materials available? When, when do you actually want to time the project? Again, as Luke said earlier, this one, you kind of want to time weather-wise. Are resources available? So, each project really depends on a number of factors as to when you get them started and when you think you complete them. Some take longer than others. So, that timeframe can really vary based upon exactly what we're doing in each particular financing. So, we've had some projects where we're actually starting within a year of when we're actually closing the bond issue, some that we're waiting three years for the first principal payment, because it may take 18 months or longer to get the projects completed and initial out. because it may take 18 months or longer to get the projects completed and initial operation started.
And, and the 1 in 7/8% is fixed?
Fixed. Yep. So that regardless of when that starts, the rate is fixed. I apologize. I do have to excuse myself. I have to be at the city.
I know.
It's six o'clock, so I'm sweating bullets here.
Thank you.
I'll be back at seven. Sorry.
You've answered my question.
One question. And Tom, so the, the money that you get from the sale of the bonds, is that the investable dollars that you have until you have to expend it in 2025? Is that, if you sell the bonds to this year, does the money become available to be invested?
So the way that this will work, if we, we're going to, you know, if the schedule continues, the closing will be August 28 of this year. That means that YCUA can start submitting invoices to the state for project costs that they incur. And the state will then wire the money into the YCUA account so that they can pay the invoices to the vendors, to the contractors. Again, that's a short, unlike if we were selling the bonds out to the market, we would get, let's just say the bond issue ends up being nine and a half million when you factor in the ARP grant. We would get all of those nine and a half million dollars on the closing day and it would sit in on a construction fund. And you'd have three years to spend those proceeds under the federal tax rules. And you're going to earn interest on all those monies, right? So that's where you're really accruing a lot of interest because you have a substantial amount of money sitting there until it gets expended. Here, on a drawdown financing, it's going to be a very short-term investment. So it's going to be nominal from an investment standpoint. They're still drawing based on, so I, I don't know the exact project completion date, but let's just say it's 18 months. We'll be done with the transaction in 18 months. If all the contractors are paid and the project's completed, then that's it. If you don't draw the funds up to the authorized dollar amount, because there is a 6% contingency built into this number that the state requires. So if you don't use your contingency, the dollar amount that we actually originally issued gets automatically reduced because you didn't draw all those funds. And you don't pay interest on the funds that you don't draw. You only pay interest on the funds that you draw. So it's even a further reduction, a potential for a further reduction, once you complete funding the project. If you don't spend the contingency, then the state sends you a new schedule that says, okay, we originally thought it was nine and a half. You didn't use the, all the contingency, so it's 9.2 hypothetically. They'll send you a new payment schedule based on what's actually been completed. And then that then trickles down through everybody, right? So our debt service that we owe to the state gets reduced, meaning that the debt service to the township and the city get reduced proportionately because you don't need to pay that much on a semi-annual basis than what we anticipated originally.
One final question. The amount that we do set aside for potential investment for a short period of time, that interest cannot exceed the interest that we're borrowing, that we're paying to the state?
It can. And the reason is that you, you have it for such a short period of time that the IRS will let you use that interest for project costs.
I was concerned about the arbitrage.
Yep. We won't, we won't be, yeah, so even if, even if we earned more than the 1 in 7/8 in the construction fund while we have those proceeds, it's for such a short period of time that we can, they'd be able to utilize that for project costs and not have to worry about rebating to the federal government. That's a discussion we'll have with the board on another issue if the, if the township ever issues its own debt. But it wouldn't be an issue on this one, Doug. Good question, though.
Any other questions? Thank you, Tom.
Great. Thank you.
We were asked to add a couple agenda items under other business. One item is to approve and sign a sale agreement between the hydro station and Clear Energy for the renewable energy credits. And this would, it's an opportunity to sell our energy to Clear Energy for an agreed amount of $13,932. Oh, I just want to know if they want to add it. I'm sorry. In the work session, is it okay to add this from Mike Seren? And then also what we discussed in the work session from Karen Wallin in TPOAM? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by Say Yes to Senior, Allison Forman.
Thanks for giving me a little bit of your time. I'll try to keep it pretty quick as well. So mostly my day job, I am the president and CEO of Ypsilanti Meals on Wheels. So I also thank you guys because you contribute to our program for residents for the Ypsilanti Township. Part of our work, as we know, we have a lot of older adults in our state and it keeps growing and growing. As a group, we've joined together, there are six agencies that are part of the Say Yes to Seniors Coalition. So we all do this in addition to our full-time job. And so we've been working as a volunteer group over the last few years. We started working in 2018 on a millage for seniors. So we've been working on this a lot. We have had, Mitchell Research has done polling for us to show that it is definitely something residents in the county are supportive of, of supporting senior services. And so in our group, I have a, the first slide there has the members of our coalition. So it ranges from Chelsea Senior Center, JFS Jewish Family Services, Catholic Social Services, the Ypsie Senior Center Meals on Wheels of Ypsilanti, the Area Agency on Aging 1B, who provides service in the community, but is also a funder in our regional entity that oversees a lot of our aging services. Michigan Medicine, which is the community benefits program that runs Ann Arbor Meals on Wheels, and Housing Bureau for Seniors is supportive, but they are not allowed to be on coalitions as is part of their requirement being under the university. We also have support from the Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation. So some quick statistics, we've been working on this for a few years. It didn't pass through in 2019, so just before the pandemic. The Board of Commissioners was not supportive of it at the time. It didn't pass. It was kind of split and then there was one or two people that abstained at that time. Since there's been a lot of change on the Board of Commissioners, we now have the support of the Board of Commissioners. In fact, in October of last year, the Board of Commissioners tasked Administrator Dill with coming up with a resolution for the Say Yes to Seniors or for a senior millage. It's supposed to come to vote sometime this year. We don't know when. We know there's a lot going on at the county with a lot of their office changeover. So we have been going out to a lot of the municipalities because it's not only important to have the county commissioner's support, but it's also important for us to make sure that the townships and the other municipalities understand what we're talking about and what we're hoping that this money would be used for and that we can address the needs for your residents and the needs for residents across the county and what challenges there might be as well. So we're, as much as I'm presenting, I also value your guys' input on this as well. I am a member, I'm, not only do I represent Ypsilanti Meals on Wheels and we support a vast majority of older adults in this township, I'm also a township resident. I live out in Green Farms. So I'm also here asking for the support as a township resident. So a little bit of an overview, we all know, a lot of us are aging into the senior, senior category quicker than maybe most of us want to. Statistic is, we now have about 2,500 residents a year who are aging into the 60-plus community. So by 2030, that means over 100,000 people that are residents in this county will need services likely. And that's what we also want to ensure people know. The services are for everyone. They're not just for low-resourced older adults. There needs to be resources to support everyone, whether they're urban, rural, suburban. And so we are trying to address that as well. I think a lot of people in the rural communities worry that they're not going to have access to these services and that's not our intent. We also know that older adults are going to be heavy utilizers of the hospital system and of our assisted living. And so if we can help them in community, which most people want, we hope that the funding we get will help keep them out of assisted living and help keep them out of hospitals. The services we provide, I think most people are probably pretty aware of what Meals on Wheels provides. So we're doing the home-delivered meals, but there's programs that do food assistance like grocery delivery. There's case management, which we provide as well for our clients. We have health and wellness services, so access to occupational therapists, access to a nurse, we have access to a dietitian through Michigan Medicine. We're working on transportation assistance. We know very clearly right now, the eviction and foreclosure issues that are going on are not just unique to younger folks. It is being experienced by our older adults. In fact, in the last month, I've had three seniors in Ypsie Township evicted from their homes or foreclosed on. And it happened very quickly. So we definitely know it's something that's even impacting our community here. We also provide home modification support. So that's through Housing Bureau for Seniors. And we also provide home modifications too with access to our occupational therapist. And then lastly, caregiver support. I think many of us might be feeling this, where we might be part of the sandwich generation. You're caring for your children, but you might also be caring for grandparents. And so we want to make sure we have access to supportive services for caregivers for respite care. So the biggest thing of looking at is the funding production. And we know the federal government is not keeping up with what is needed in the communities that, you know, the funding is not keeping up with inflation and with the demand for certain populations. And so the quickest way to look at this is the senior population by 2030 is increasing by over 100%. While adjusting for inflation, we've actually lost 25% of our funding. So we're at, being asked to serve quite a few more people with 25% less money. And I can speak to that. I get Title III funding. I get approximately $247,000 and we run through that. And that just covers food costs. We ran through that in five months this year. So I'm already done with my contract for the year. So I have to make it up through other ways just for the food costs. So why we feel like we need a millage or consideration of a millage? In our state, we actually have a lot of counties and municipalities that support senior millages. In fact, 73 out of 83 counties in Michigan have a senior millage currently. And in the last two years, four, four municipalities or four counties have not only added, some have doubled what their senior millages are because they know that they have a very large older adult population. So in a comparison on the next slide, we compare ourselves, I think most commonly, to Kent County, so Grand Rapids area. We have a lot of similarities to them university-wise and population size. They have had a millage for 25 years in providing services. And so to look at that, based on 2016, which was the last time we were able to run apples-to-apples kind of comparisons, we were only able to serve about 4,500 folks and they were allowed, they were able to serve 8,800, so double the amount of people that we are able to serve. And to actually utilize that funding, they were able to leverage that for other state and federal programs to get additional money as well. And even private funders look at this favorably. So like if I can leverage other state and federal monies, that looks favorable when I go to private funders as well to make our money go even for their super older adults. So the key reason why do we need to help seniors now? Because we're already there and many agencies are not able to keep pace and have wait lists for their services. We are very fortunate that we do not have a wait list for our program, but what we do have waitlist for is for special diet meals and for certain services that we offer. Now, other Meals on Wheels programs in the county, that is not the same. They, some places have as much as a 20 to 100-person waitlist to get on for, for meal service delivery. And the same way for case management is even worse. So if folks need access to benefits, advocacy, utility assistance, they may be waiting six months to get a case management consult. So we look at this and saying, we have limited funding, but what would we do with money that, if we received it from Washtenaw County? So we're asking for a .5 mil. And estimated, that was around nine million. In talking with the county, they now think it, based on our property, you know, our real estate property is going up again, that it could be closer to $11 million by the time if it were to go in place in '24 or '25. So five areas that we think should be funded are case management, senior nutrition, maintaining and expanding senior centers, supporting caregivers, and housing preservation. So case management to us means creating a centralized hub. We know that often times you go to ask for help and you get told, we can help you with this, but you need to go to this agency to get this support. And sometimes they get duplicating services or they're having to go through the same assessment over and over and over again. And having cared for an older adult myself, it is very frustrating and I definitely don't like being a part of asking people to do more when they're already very busy. So central to this, we want to create a hub. So one centralized intake, the closed-loop referral, so that if you come in Chelsea or you come in Ypsilanti Township, you need access to transportation, you need access to meals. You only have one access point and then from there, they refer you to Meals on Wheels, they refer you to Jewish Family Services for the transportation assistance, but it's all in one centralized system for you. So you don't have to deal with two different agencies, you deal with one. And we feel like that's going to be helpful to us as agencies as well because that duplication means we're having to chase down a call to Jewish Family Services or they're having to do the same for us at Meals on Wheels. We also think it will help us with some backend office management as well. So we might realize some operational savings as well. And for, to put in perspective, Jewish Family Services said if they could get $150,000, it would allow them to serve, you know, upwards of, you know, 200 to 300 more seniors with more robust support. For senior nutrition for us, we really look at it as looking for special diet support. We support a lot of different culturally sensitive diets, but not every program is able to. We currently offer vegetarian meals, diabetic-friendly meals, gluten-free meals, vegan/vegetarian, and then the DASH diet, which is like a Mediterranean diet. And we off, we are one of the few that offer a second meal of the day. Many programs can only afford to do one. So with those strains coming, we know we want to support people so that they can have the best nutrition that they can have, hopefully to feel better, get it back out in the community. And then when they're back out in the community, we want them to go to vibrant and important facilities known as senior centers. So senior centers have taken the brunt, I think during the pandemic, unfortunately. They had to close, so our seniors didn't have access to connecting with their friends and for important services. So one of the things is, right now, there is no funding to support a full-time director for most of these senior centers. So it would be helpful to have a full-time professional who's there to support all the services that they have. They can offer more programming. They can also then make the senior center more than just for seniors. It could become intergenerational programming sites as well. It could be a site now for people to have weddings and parties and get-togethers and educational seminars. But because they have such limited staffing, most of the time, they're open from like 11 to 1 o'clock. So not great timeframes for other people in the community to come utilize. In addition to the senior centers, we look at how are we supporting our family caregivers? And so we need to educate and train them. So many of you, if you, you know, they, your family member gets discharged from the hospital and you come home with a stack of paperwork and all this new medication that you now have to help your older, you know, adult family member deal with. And so that gets really challenging. And a lot of times, folks don't always feel they can go back to the hospital system or to their primary provider and get that support and education they need. So a lot of times, a lot of agencies are investing in having staff that can help them navigate the system once they get home, how they can get that home modification after, you know, mom broke her hip so that it becomes safer to bathe in, in the bathroom again. So we're talking about how we can provide those kind of supports, subsidizing respite care so that the loved one feels good enough to, when they need to go get a haircut or they need to go, go grocery shopping, there's someone reliably there who can watch their, their loved one. The other piece, and we've been seeing this huge too, is we need more support for grandparents who are raising grandchildren. That is definitely a big, big thing we're seeing a lot. And with grandparents that are dealing with that, those are also folks who tend to experience housing and- those are also folks who tend to experience housing instability as well. So we want to see as tying that together and then also trying in that intergenerational piece as well. And then housing preservation and housing security, by far the most expensive. You could probably spend all $11 million just on this one, which is not going to be what you want. So when we talk about this with older adults, the things that they, when we survey them, they want most is they want to remain in the home that they've lived in for 40 years. We have a lot of seniors like that in Ipsy Township. They do not want to leave that home, but it's no longer the safest place for them to live. They need grab bars, they need step stools, they need ramps. And so home maintenance and repairs is going to be really key. And it keeps also the housing stock a little bit prettier in our communities and, you know, keeps it, you know, a vital asset in our community. We want to provide those aging in place accesses to having access to a nurse and an OT who can teach them how to now navigate safely in and out of their home, how to safely use the kitchen. That's actually the biggest thing we've done in the last two years. Having a full time occupational therapist has allowed us to help so many of our clients and their caregivers. We also, because we know we are not able to keep everyone in their home because we can't, we can't control the price of rent and mortgages. But what we can do is create a housing trust fund. So there was discussion of, other communities have established these housing trust funds where folks can access them. If they can find and leverage other funding, then it would help us to pay for mortgage payments, help us for down payments to move into a new rental property to keep them in the communities they want to live in. And of course, expanding housing counseling services. We see there's a need, there's a lot of older adults who might like to, what we call do home sharing. That's become, that's very popular in Europe. It's starting to gain a hold in some, like in California and out West. I think in this community, it could theoretically work. So we're exploring, you know, housing share is another program. Could be a way to deal with some of the housing instabilities for some of our seniors. So those are all the areas where we're, we see that we can be supportive of that. There is ARP money. There was $4 million set aside for older adult services. It's currently in the RFP process at the county. And the Council on Aging requested that money for agencies. This is what we're planning to use to say, let's see how some of this stuff works so that when it comes time for millage, we can actually show voters and municipalities, this is what this kind of funding would do each year to support older adults in the community. And then how we can leverage that going forward for other funders as well. Because that's something, I think the Board of Commissioners is very interested in saying, how do we leverage our money, which is, you know, a limited pot of money to see if there's other potential regional funders or corporate funders who might want to support us? I know that's a lot.
Questions or comments?
Madam Chair. Allison, I just want to say thank you so much for coming. Thank you for your presentation. And I just want to first say that I really support senior services and have a special place in my heart for serving older adults. I think that my concern is just the timing of everything. As you know, last year, we had a significant millage that was put out for transportation that hasn't affected our residents quite yet. They'll see that next year on their tax bill. And then today, from a treasurer's meeting, obviously Stan's treasurer, he can talk more in detail about it. But I do know that we're expecting to still have another 5% increase on our property tax values. So that's definitely going to impact our residents. Inflation's still around 8% and there won't be any headly rollbacks for our current millages. And then I was just, out of curiosity, looking back at my own property taxes. And of course, like, you know, this is just so that I wasn't creeping on anyone else's property. But within the last five years, my own property tax has gone up about $2,000 total per year. And so while I want to be very sensitive to the needs of seniors and folks aging in our community, because we have to support them in some way, I just don't know that, there's a really good article in MTA a while back, and I'll send it to you just because I bet you'll be interested in it. But it was just about the unsustainable program of millages being the way that, that local municipalities, cities, townships, or anything fun things. And, you know, as we know, in the last couple of weeks, our federal government has just really dropped the ball. And I'm so sorry for that and wish that that was a different system. But, you know, while that's all in place, I still do have concerns just about the timing because, you know, everyone here was here in 2008 and we don't know what the market's going to be like and what our housing's going to continue to look like. I mean, housing affordability, like you just discussed, property taxes, you know, that's a huge thing. I know my deputy Lisa, we talk about property taxes for her aging fam, or her aging parents. And, you know, every year they have to just take more and more out of their savings. So, so those are my concerns, just a little bit about the timing. And, you know, definitely support senior services. We love the work that you do and that Meals on Wheels does. So, and also I'm sure Supervisor Stamo could talk a little bit more about it. But we do have this idea for sort of a hub. We have a property over on Holmes Road. It was like an old police station that kind of wasn't being utilized very well. And so it's, the idea is to be like a network for, you know, what you were saying, connecting those different services or having a location for, you know, someone from Jewish Family Services and Meals on Wheels to be there together at one time to like help residents navigate that process. So just wanted to share that with you also.
Yeah, when, you know, back in 2018, that was the same thing that, you know, came up as a concern. And we did a couple of listing sessions in West Willow. And one of the things is many of the folks who lived there, who were homeowners had said, we see that this would probably benefit our older adults a lot. And so spending the money so that it reduces my burden as their caregiver. So we were trying to say like, the messaging needs to be very well crafted. And so like, you know, with saying yes to seniors, like I instantly thought of like videos of a senior that we've helped in all the services we did. And you say who he is and, you know, I'm Ralph. This is my personal story. This is why maybe some people might say yes to supporting senior services. You have to have that personal touch because, you know, we all have a certain amount of money to live on and to decide on what's important for us, you know, as well. So it's definitely, you know, it's, it's interesting because every time we've done a Mitchell research or a research study, you mentioned things like Meals on Wheels. And I was like, oh my gosh, don't ever touch their money. But we also don't have enough money to serve everything we're doing. So it, we do have to be creative and say, how do we leverage this money? And I think looking at the ARP money for this calendar year might be helpful to say, where would the biggest bang for our buck be if we did have a millage? You know, would it make sense to be supporting, you know, not five categories? This was something that the Board of Commissioners asked us. They said, here, what are your five targets? And then what would be the services you think we could offer within those target areas that would be meaningful to people? Whether if they're urban, rural, suburban, an older senior, a younger senior, a senior who has health issues, or a senior who just wants to live a vibrant lifestyle. So we want to make sure we're putting all of that stuff in there as well. So I definitely, I mean, as a taxpayer myself in the township, I definitely get it.
Other comments or questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a question. With the, I've got a couple. You mentioned in your presentation about staffing. And the thing that I see with senior services is heavily staff involved. It relies on a lot of people. Are there, the other counties, are they having those staffing problems? And even though we might say if we did approve a millage and there would still be staffing problems, how could that be resolved?
Yeah, so, you know, I think for a lot of us, we do fall kind of along the lines of healthcare. Like I have social workers and trying to hire social workers right now is really challenging. We've gotten creative with, you know, the expansion of having community health workers has helped us. And we actually use that as an empowerment program. One of my client care associates, which we call our drivers, really wanted to get a certification. So we paid for her to go through the certification as a community health worker. So now she has full time employment with healthcare benefits. And so it was a great way to help other members in our community become fully employed with good, meaningful work that is important to them to represent people in their community. So we have been getting a little bit creative. And the state actually is in the process of potentially partially funding CHWs. So meaning if we have a program where we can say the CHW, the community health worker is taking on that work of some of the lower level stuff that maybe, you know, they can do information and referrals rather than having the social worker who costs more money and do that. So the CHW is able to make the information and referral calls for an older adult and their caregiver. So with that program, they would pay half of the cost of the CHW. So thereby reducing some of the staffing cost burden for us.
You mentioned the state funding. It wouldn't be part of the ARPA. So what would happen if the state decided not to fund, not, not to assist with that part and still rely on the millage?
So that program is through a different program. It's like a Medicaid, it's a Medicaid Medicare related funded program for the CHWs that's already going through state by state. And so Michigan is already in the final processes of that in September, October. The ARP money, we're allowed to use for general operation. We can use it for recouping costs if we had any lost costs from the pandemic, which is obvious we did. But what we're trying to use it as a group, many of us agencies want to use it to help take our programs to what are, what seniors need for the coming years and addressing where are the gaps we currently have? And then showing how we can assess that and show the value of the service that we're doing of it, keeping people out of the hospital system. If we keep them out of the hospital system, maybe then an insurer might want to pay for our services. And there are some insurance providers that pay for home delivered meals. It's starting, but it's very, very small right now. So that could become an income generator. But a lot of times they need the local community to do the proof of concept.
Well, I guess what really gets me is the, and I think it's a great program, you know, with the five different areas that, you know, because seniors are a very important population and seem to be left out of a lot of things. And so I'm just, I just want to make sure that with all of the, what I want to say, hopes or not hopes, with all of the presentations, are other counties successful? Or have they experienced any disadvantages or hiccups along the way?
So one of the most recent ones that had a millage was our friends in Saginaw. And they, they actually started the say yes to seniors concept saying like, because then they could do the campaign of like, you know, say yes to seniors, say yes to Bill, who's your neighbor down, you know, down the road. There, they really didn't have a lot of pushback. It was very interesting and they came and talked to our group. The county that we found that had the most pushback and they, I mean, it was a long time ago, theirs was in the eighties. And I, and I know like times were tough in the eighties. So like, what county is Flint in? Is that Jackson?
Genesee.
Genesee, Genesee. So Genesee had some pushback and it took them about a year and a half. And what they did was they did listing sessions. So we've gone to senior apartment complexes to get the view of what the seniors want, to make sure it's not just people who are our current clients, but people who could be our clients in the future. And we wanted to make sure their voice was heard. We also asked caregivers what is most important to them because we also know those caregivers sometimes want different things than their loved one does. So we wanted to make sure we reconcile both of those needs. And then we also looked at what is it that the community needs? Where is their pressure points for the community? And so older adults, you know, very commonly, they call, they, they call the fire department a lot when they fall on the floor, right? And so we know that we call the fire department and the police department a lot for safety checks. We find that if clients are healthier and have more support, they're not relying on your services, you know, your municipal services as much. So Kent County actually found that that in some of their communities went significantly down where they, you know, they weren't calling EMT as much. They weren't calling fire department. Probably for us, we'd probably call the fire department or the police department at least once a week for a safety check for an older adult. So there are those kinds of savings. There's also been housing related savings. You know, we've been able to help people keep their home maintained so that they don't have fines from their municipality, that, you know, they don't have some dealings with their, you know, HOAs, things like that. So we kind of look at it that way too, of where are those pressure points as well? And then for renters, you know, looking at, for them is if they're able to, you know, not to get into the nitty gritty and the dirty part of it, but in the sense that, you know, as we age, sometimes we're not able to take as good a care of ourselves and we may not keep our home up. And we have older adults who get evicted from their home because they're not able to keep it clean because it has smelling of it, you know, our, ourself and not keeping ourself up. Like we're not, not cleaning ourself well and we're not cleaning up the home as well. So that ends up people then becoming, they get evicted. Then we have the blight that you see outside of the apartment complex. They get moved to assisted living or they get sent to the hospital or to rehab care. So we're looking at it that way as well.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, so I had a few. Thank you, Allison, for coming and seeing us. I would echo a lot of what trustee Gerald Rose said about the millages because it does give us pause in that there's always like things that we want, but then the impact later when those taxes are implemented aggravates some of what you discussed, like the eviction problem. So, and the affordability, which is already a problem in Washtenaw County. So that's the one thing that gives me pause in that the other thing is, because of course you want to take care of your seniors. I mean, we're only as good, society is only as good as how we take care of the people who are maybe more fragile. So that of course is important. But then I'm, one of the things that I think doesn't always get thought about is how do we cooperatively work together? So when all, when groups decide, well, we need a millage for this and we need a millage for that, rarely do groups come together to cohesively look at problems because it's just easier. If we can get a millage and we can slap it on, we can do whatever. So when I was reading the presentation, I'm looking at transportation. So we just did pass a very large increase that hasn't shown up on taxes yet. And one of the selling points at that point was we have an aging society. We have these options for how we're going to do that. And so it's concerning. Maybe part of what you're talking about is that the resources would be linking people to that. But if they're doing senior transportation and this group is going to use a millage to do that and there's not a cohesive way of collaborating, then people are paying like double and that's not good. It's more, it's just not cost effective. So I don't know how groups become more cohesive in that. That's one thing.
That's a very good question because we explored that. They had a, they had a senior transportation council meeting and had us all there after the fact to ask our opinion on stuff. And a lot of it was still like, well, you need to fill out this paperwork for the senior, you need to still do this for the senior. That's not included in the millage.
Yeah, that's concerning.
It was. And when we explored, like when they asked us, what are all the things transportation wise seniors need? They're like, well, we need a whole county wide transportation millage that includes all the people around. We're like, that's not going to happen.
Right.
I mean, that's why we even look at this saying, transportation maybe shouldn't even be considered in our big ball of wax because they are dealing with it maybe in a different way. Areas where we have tried to collaborate, which we, we were going to try to do a millage together and Andy Labarre had tried to do this. But we found out from the lawyers at the county that you cannot do two of these kind of millages together. And so there was talk of doing the public health and a senior millage together and trying to connect the public health and the senior millage piece together, like senior services. The other piece I even look at is, we all know, some of us don't always love the mental health millage that passed. It was not very favorable to some folks. But there is even talk of the funding, the way mental health millages, could some of that funding go to support seniors? And it has, we've heard nothing related to it. So I do get that. And I think, I don't know where that starts with. We've, we've had those, I think we've had some meaningful discussion with Administrator Dill and with the Board of Commissioners, but haven't seen how we can connect that. Because I think there is ways that those things could be connected. But I'm not sure from when the lawyers and like, you know, all the laws that are on the books of like, how we can make how we can make that happen. But I know it's a focus for, the board of commissioners has their strategic planning session tomorrow. And they were talking about how can we look at health and human services as a whole and all, what is it all vulnerable populations need and how we can maybe fund that together? Would it be better to have a health and human services millage? I'm not sure. But we have had some of those discussions with them. So I think as a group, our, our aging service people are pretty pragmatic. We definitely look for other people's opinions a lot. We ask for our clients' opinions a lot, what they want as well. And we know they are taxpayers as well and unlimited incomes too. So I think that's a valid point and I welcome as much support from municipalities to have those conversations with the board of commissioners as well.
A couple more. So the other thing that, so one of the other things you mentioned was like, you're looking at it for everyone and how do you, how do you, like for everybody, not just, because a lot of times they're thinking just a certain population of people are going to be helped. But then my concern is that when you bring everybody in, which is a good thing to do, some people are better at utilizing resources and services. And so there'd have to be some mechanism to make sure that if you're going to approach it, like we want to help everybody, that, you know, people who are overwhelmed or people who, so that would be the concern because it's a good idea to say everyone, but then always some individuals are better at utilizing things, finding and getting what they need. And it can't be that just the best utilizer is the one that gets the services. We have to find the people who need it that maybe don't know how to do that and help them in that way. So that's just a caution that I, when I hear that, that I get concerned about. Then just a couple more. So what senior centers? So when you're talking about the senior centers, like we have a senior center, like what, which senior centers are they looking at that would get help from this village?
I think all of them because the only one that is currently, well, there's two that are already currently full time staffed, like Pittsfield is currently full time staffed. And I think Dexter is back to being full time staffed, but all the rest are part time. Yeah, I haven't seen that.
It's saying township's definitely full time.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. The one is, yes, yes, yes. But there are a few that they don't have full time staff. Or what I have found, there are a lot of them that volunteer a lot of their time. There is, they're also an older generation. So there are also very dedicated people who've lived in the community. It's, it's always, you know, really interesting. I know there's a few townships that are struggling. I know like Whitmore Lakes area, like they were struggling to keep theirs open and running full time because theirs is also intergenerational where they're offering, you know, services for seniors, for families and for children. And I know they were hit very hard in the last five years where they lost all operational support. So it used to be that many municipal senior centers from my, to my knowledge, which I'm not as educated on that side of it, but a lot of them used to be, the buildings were run and operated by the municipality. There's a few that their municipality does not own and operate it anymore. Like Dexter does not contribute to it right now. Now they're talking about creating a millage this year to support it through the school system.
I think Augusta does the same thing.
Yep, yep. I know, and like Ipsy Township has probably one of the more robust programming offerings for older adults for their programs too.
So just wondered like, because you'd want to make sure that, you know, if communities, if somebody's having a hard time, we understand that, but like it's been a conscious choice in Ipsy Township to make sure that that was a maintained service. So because we made that choice, we don't want anybody to think that we would not want help. You know what I mean? Because we valued it and we put a, you know, we've tried to keep that open and to do it that way, we wouldn't want anybody to think, well, we wouldn't need it. Or just as like, if the millage passes, you don't want it to be the kind of thing where funding sources that you guys have already had, helping people decide, oh, there's a millage, we're not going to do that. That doesn't make sense to me either, right? Because that's often what happens. You pass a millage and then sources that have been helping, then people decide, okay, well then we'll just use it for something else. And I don't think that's the intention here. Otherwise people will be coming back for less than a point five, it'll be like a mill or something. So I think all those things, when you go after it, just the trust level, especially in parts of our community, when someone comes and says they're going to do something and there's going to be a benefit, it doesn't always pan out that way. And so I think that's really important for, for especially certain parts of our community, particularly even the schools. Like some of the promises that have been made for people have not been kept. And so we're a hopeful, kind community, very generous. So often people, I'm surprised they ask for something, the community says, but then when it all falls in and it comes to the tax bills, then it's, it's harder than what I think people plan to do because they are generous, you know, Ipsy Township people are generous. They've got a good heart. If you say somebody needs help, they want to help out. But currently we have a lot of people who are hard, having a hard time taking care of themselves because of some of the agreements we made to, to help others. And I think that's what we would want people to be mindful of.
I think, I think that's really true of like making sure you deliver on your promises. Like so sometimes simplifying what we ask for so that you know, I'm always sometimes like when folks like, we do X, Y, and Z. And I'm like, maybe they don't want all three of those things. Maybe they only want one thing. And if you do really well on that, then folks will say, let me support your next thing that, because you have proven yourself to be a strong partner. And I think that's what's hard with some of the services. Think with meal service, it's pretty tangible. You can see what we do, but for like case management and you're helping someone to stay in their home or to get in-home tour support through Medicaid, that can take like a year to get done through, you know, the state. So that is harder to see the benefit and the benefit is so small for like one person and the time you put into that might be $15,000 of someone's time, effort, resources. Whereas for $15,000, how many meals can I serve? And that has a much higher, you know, benefit ratio for, you know, people seeing that in the community. And you see us out on the road. So you see my vans. So you see like, hey, yeah, they're doing what they said. They're serving more people. I see more vans. I see them everywhere. So I think you're right, the value proposition has to be there where people really see that. And I know that living in this community, we've been wanting, you know, and a center in this side of the township to support our residents for recreation and hopefully it happens in the next year or two.
I have to get my plug in then because I'm always concerned about, like there is a lot, there are a lot of buildings that people paid for. And so I'm always very concerned about new, when there are buildings that people have paid for, which I can talk to you more about it on my own, but I, I can never let that be said without me pointing out that there are buildings that people are still paying for right now that sit empty and they're not being used for the intended purposes with recreational facilities, gyms, one of the nicest pools in Washtenaw County. So it's just, that's the kind of thing when people come, especially to Ipsy Township, that's a hard pill to swallow because again, like if you paid to make sure your children have something and then it's taken away from you and they don't have access to it, it gets hard to trust when people say they're going to do it. Has nothing to do with you or the services. I'm grateful you came. Sometimes we're a hard group to come to when you have these conversations, but it, it's just a true reality that there are working people who it could be said built this, a large part of the county with, you know, sweat, tears, blood, all of that. And, you know, when factories closed, people didn't have the same ability, but they, they were generous building things that I don't think are always appreciated, the, the long term investment that was made. So as people talk about that, and I, I'm not secretive of that. I'm, I've said it right to people to their faces. But you know, when you're going to invest 30 million, what would 30 million, I mean, you're not asking for 30 million right now. What would 30 million do if we were utilizing other spaces? Maybe we wouldn't need 30 million for that. Maybe we could have money for something else. So just, just know that. And that's a Debbie Swanson thing that's not a surprise. I'm not secretive about that.
Although a lot of us concur with Debbie Swanson on that.
I concur. I, I, I mean, we have, I see lots of these buildings. I know like where we're at, we're in a church and the church numbers are dwindling and they're like, do you want to buy our building? I'm like, it needs a lot of work. If someone could help pay for that, then why wouldn't we want to stay in that building? Like that's the main reason we've never left the building we're in because, you know, we pay very little rent, arguably I'd say almost free. And so it's a great location to the community. And as big as we've gotten and the tenure that I've been with Meals on Wheels, I just am like, I would not come and ask the community for millions of dollars for a building because we looked at chapel and I was like, I would like, maybe we could move there if that was something needed. But I definitely appreciate that too of like, buildings need to be utilized and sometimes it just needs to be freshened up.
Allison, I just have a quick, couple of quick questions because our meeting starts at seven, but how much is the county currently giving for senior services in?
So through OCED, which it's pass through money from the area agency on aging 1B. So for nutrition services for the whole county, we get $835,000 to support all seniors. My program gets a, a bigger portion, 247, because of course it's based on population size that you serve and we serve one of the larger population areas. And then it also takes into, you know, economics and the average median income. So for, we get more than Ann Arbor because of the average median income. And our average client lives on very little money, like a thousand dollars a month. So we definitely understand that.
And I'm not asking for like specifics. I was trying to understand because county government, one of its purposes is for people to be healthier and to thrive. And I, I thought they invested dollars in, I don't know, is there a senior division or is it all through OCED?
It's all through OCED and that's also a challenge in our county compared to all the other counties. Have a actual council on aging and a department that has funding, that has one or two people that are fully designated to supporting that. And they probably then go after like, there's money through HUD. There's money through HUD. And instead they're like, you go do HUD. And I'm like, I'm not big enough for HUD to give me money. I'm, I'm this little portion of Washtenaw County. It needs to be all of Washtenaw County.
So that's kind of what we have found with the mental health millage and the public safety millage, those two were combined and that's what I think they're saying they cannot do again is have two different public safety and mental health. And we still really don't know, you know, where all that money is going, although we know it's needed, but where's it going for the mental health? I don't, I don't know about public safety either really. And it was one mill.
Yeah.
So $22 million total, based on the new numbers.
Yeah, roughly that, yeah.
And then, and so then my question is, did the county shift their funding where they actually paid for some of those services with mental health and with public safety and shifted to the millage, which opens up money in their general, you know, fund? And I always, I don't know enough about their budget to know, but what we do in Ipsy Township, what we try to do is really, there's housing affordability and there's affordable housing. So affordable housing is your utilities and your taxes. And if you rent, when your taxes go up anywhere in our county, your rent will go up. It's going to happen and it has happened everywhere in Washtenaw County. So what we try to do is shift. If there's, you know, 14 mills or 10 mills in a community, because your revenue goes up, is there a way to shift so you don't have to increase taxes on people? And people don't think about that in other, in the county anyways, you know, because there's a big article about how they receive 5% more in revenue. That is a lot of money to them. So I think it's, they were getting 19 million and now it's up to 21, you said?
Yeah, 21 or more. They said it could be more.
And it's going to continue to grow because as you have new development, you get more tax revenue. And then as your assessment goes up, your tax bill goes up. So instead of reducing millages or shifting, no one thinks about that. And I really wish they would because people are not going to be able to stay in their home. They're on fixed incomes.
Yep.
And if the prices go up more and the utilities go up more, I mean, that's what's happening. What we see stand and over the years that we've been here, I mean, people are crying trying to pay their taxes and people really don't see that.
Yeah, yep. We, we see it all the time and.
And I know that the county helps. Catherine McClery has been a leader in helping people to do that, yet that's in this plan. So I don't under, like I, I want to make sure there's clarity and there's not duplication of things.
I think this is really helpful information because, you know, what you hear at various levels, so what, what we hear at the county level is different than what you hear at the municipal level. And you have to reconcile between that. And they came to us and said, well, what could you do all these things? And that wasn't necessarily what we envisioned, but we're like, well, but these are all areas we support and could use additional money for. But I, I definitely see that of like refining what the ask is, refining what we support and what people want to say, okay, if I was going to say yes to a millage, what is it that's going to be the benefit to my community?
Is it this group doing it? Like I, that's not.
So because we don't have a council on aging that is through the county, it is on us as the agencies to do this in addition to our full time jobs.
No, but like if a millage is proposed and if a millage.
No, it wouldn't be managed through us. It would be managed, so it would be managed likely through the county, like.
So that you gotta, that clear, that's not clear either, you know? That's the kind of questions I think.
And that's something we're trying to get addressed with Greg because part of his work with the board of commissioners, tasking him with creating the resolution for it, is creating the framework. We've connected him with the folks from Kent County, from Ingham to Monroe County, which has a very lovely format for their senior millage and what they do to support it. They fill one specific niche. They don't do six or seven different supportive services for seniors. They picked one area that was very important to people in Monroe.
Right. And Kent County is a little bit bigger than ours. I'm not sure why you chose Kent County.
They have, there's a lot of similarity because they also have a community where half of the community has a very high average median income and the other half of the county has a lower average median income. Cause we know that between east and west, there is a vast difference between the average median income. And we're seeing that. We're seeing older adults not being able to afford Ann Arbor and are moving to Ipsy. And then we're seeing Ipsy folks moving into Wayne County. So I definitely get the affordability. So it's looking at, that's why I had suggested in the group, we started talking about, we need to go past what the board of commissioners is asking, but also figure out what you guys want. So I value your guys' input because I actually will take this back to our group and because we want to be supportive of what all the municipalities want, knowing like, you know, Chelsea might want something different than what Ipsy Township does, but there might be some overlapping of like, maybe we'll come down to finding two or three categories that make the most sense for supporting seniors and could make a difference in keeping them housed or keeping them in our community.
I think all of us say yes to seniors, but how you get there is always the question, right?
Yeah, very much so. I appreciate this feedback and, and, you know, information and I will definitely take it to the group because we're, we're not there. And so rather than waiting till like when we have a millage, like with some of them and you see it on the ballot and you're like, no one asked us. We came, we're coming because we're going to all the municipalities because we want to ask you before we're there.
And so when are you looking at going there?
Uh, so they're thinking 24 to, for, so like if Greg gets everything set and ready by the time, you know, it's still going to go through some iterations. The idea is in 24, in 2024, one of the elections. That's why right now we want to go to all the municipalities. I've been to Superior Township. I'm going to be in the city of Ipsy in a few weeks to give the presentation. Some folks that are on the west side of the county, you know, Bill O'Reilly, who's from Chelsea Senior Center is going to meet with Chelsea and Manchester and Dexter.
All right.
Yeah, thank you guys so much. I appreciate it. Thank you so much for your time and thank you for supporting Ipsy Meals on Wheels. And I, I've met most of you in some way, shape or form. And Debbie, thank you so much for helping us support Ms. Virginia's 100th birthday this weekend.
All right, we're going to adjourn at 6:55?